Everybody, so we have Carmen Virtual, Lucinda will be joining us shortly. And I'm not sure about Troy. He's sick and he said he would try to attend, but we'll see how that proceeds. So first item on the agenda is public comments. And I'm going to read a little statement. The public comments period is intended for the public to share ideas and concerns. It is not intended for the interactive discussion with the council. There may be opportunities for the public comments during specific agenda items that require a public hearing. Members of the public are requested to confine their remarks to questions or issues under discussion during this time. Any other designated comment period individual shall not engage in personal attacks, shall not impugn the motives of any speaker and shall at all times while in session conduct themselves in an appropriate manner. No person shall make personal, impertinent slanderous or unauthorized remarks or become boisterous while addressing the council. So with that being said, we had our first person for public comments, which that was already there. And I'm sure you already read it, Cora. Anyway, you're the first one. So if you want to come up and just give us your name and what city you reside in, please. Okay. Oh, this makes it better since we don't. Okay, great.
Cora Vander Velden. Do I need to give me my address? Where I live, Coos Bay, Oregon. I'm, I'm the chairperson of the Coos Bay Tree Board. And I was told that we needed somebody, a representative of the tree board needed to be here tonight because the council had questions about our tree list that we have submitted.
True. So Cora, we do have an agenda item and you're more than welcome to speak now or if you'd like just to speak when that comes up and address any questions that the council will under that agenda item.
Well, I, I, I'm here to address whatever questions that the council has.
Okay. And I'm not sure who would have any, until we get to that, would you mind just coming back up at the agenda item?
No problem.
All right. I appreciate it. Cause I know, I think Lucinda had a question and she's not even online. So Dean.
Dean Lundy from Coos Bay. I, most of you know my passion for public safety and things. I have two things that I would like to bring up tonight. One is, is where Teakwood Avenue goes into Highway 101. Five of us rode bicycles with the ODOT representative across the highway behind the Toyota dealership and came out at the new Planet Fitness thing there. And I asked the guy, I said, how can I get across the street? And he said, well, anyway, that's another story. The people coming out of Teakwood, there, there are going to be three fast food restaurants there. There's a, there's a fitness place there and a furniture place. And it's going to be really wicked coming out. There's a, there's a blind curve on 101. When you have an 80,000 pound load coming around that curve, it's really, it's really scary for people to come out that don't know this, this highway, whether they're going south or if they try and go north, it's just, it should have been marked when they had the, the, the orange barrels out there. People realized it was a construction zone, but now they've removed the barrels and, and you should hear the skids. I've been working across the street and, and it's kind of scary. The second thing I would like to direct at Counselor Farmer. I just learned that, that we allowed the federal government to decommission the Coast Guard ship Orca. And my history is with water safety with the San Francisco Fire Department Surf Rescue, on Ocean Beach Water Rescue at, in the marina where we towed in sailboarders and, and handed body recoveries from jumpers off the bridge to the Coast Guard. They handled that during the AIDS epidemic. But then I worked five years at SFO doing all water rescue. And I think that that was really, we should have fought like crazy to keep the Orca and the crew. I'll take my question off the air. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else, any council or any public comments with this would be the time?
Good morning, Mike Powder, Empire. Thanks for letting me speak, even though it came in a little late. The roads here are getting really, really busy. You know, our vehicles are getting so big. I pretty much quit riding my bike a lot of places. I used to ride downtown, but now I've been trying, but now it's getting pretty bad. Hour ago, even though we got the bike lanes, it's still risky even using the bike lanes. I, I guess it's the summer, but vehicles are getting bigger and they are getting faster. And I've clocked, I'm clocking, I, coming in, I clock somebody doing 35 or 30 through town. You know, there's just a, it's a speedway out there. 101 is a big pain. 45 is too fast. I'll say it until the day I die. And Dean's right. We need, we need crosswalks on Teakwood. We need pedestrian safety all the way along that road. Other than that, just staying in the spotlight. Thank you.
All right. Thanks. Okay. So we have a new item on our agenda that we're going to continue with. This is going to be new staff introductions. And so this is right? So this is a time that we're going to start to get to know some of our staff that are newly hired in the city of Coos Bay and maybe even revisit some of the other ones here that have been here for a while. Anyway, Nicole, you want to start us off?
Um, well, that's a great lead in. That's just kind of what I was going to explain to everybody in the space. We're going to try and catch all the new folks, eventually cycle through all 130 plus employees that we have. So that is a connection between the mayor and city council and our community. So we have an idea of what folks are doing here at the city of Coos Bay. Our department heads will introduce and then if, if our folks are willing to come forward, then you know, they may have some additional things that they'll share. Obviously have questions. They'd probably be happy to answer those. So we have folks from community development that are here to.
Um, so good evening, council. Today we have our codes and planning specialist here with us. And I'll start with Grace Thomas on the left in brown. She is newly with us about three weeks now. She recently relocated from the Denver area to be here in Coos Bay. And so we're very happy about that. And then Tiffany in the beautiful blue dress, she's been with us for about a year and a half. And I'll say Tiffany recently got her permit technician certification, which is something we value. They, it gives the person a broad overview of codes and really emphasizes the, the value of providing that good customer service upfront, helping applicants make sure they submit good applications for review, right? Um, so Tiffany and Grace as codes planning specialists, there really are the face of the city, the person that you'll first deal with when you ask, need help with permits, licensing. So I always like to say they are like the VIPs, you know, they're very and they also, that's external and internal because they provide the public works department and community development departments, administrative assistance and often some of the other departments. So they're really valuable people. They provide the service with style every day. And so we really appreciate the work, work you guys do every day. So thank you. And ladies, this is our council here online. Council, if you have any questions.
So I'm glad you came. Appreciate it. And I'm glad that you're working here and hopefully it continues for a long period of time. So if I walk up to the window, are you one of the two that I will talk to about helping me with whatever?
Yes. Yes. Yeah. We're the first line of defense.
Of defense.
Well, well, yes, we get your information and we'll find who can answer the questions if we can't answer the questions and get you all the forms you need to get and yeah.
So I won't have to bother Chelsea all the time. Say Chelsea, right? I can just come up and say, Grace, you're Tiffany, right?
We may pull Chelsea in and go, it's a really complicated, okay, Chelsea.
Must not have been much in the way of.
So do you have any questions for us? Counsel, you have any questions for either one, Tiffany or Grace?
Yeah, thank you.
Definitely. If you have questions about permits or business license, start with us.
So what brought you from Denver?
Um, my spouse actually got a job with Coos County as a mobile crisis response therapist.
Great.
Um, and then I found the perfect opening with the city and it was a very seamless transition. Thank you.
Well, we're glad to have you here. Seriously.
Thank you so much.
All right. All right. Well, since you'll take care of us, if you have any questions, you can always come back and ask us.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chelsea.
Can we just ask that the person, if you're online, if you could mute yourself? If you're not talking?
The one indicated as Tammy up there.
I don't even have to, so anyway. All right. Next item on the agenda is going to be adopt the tree board recommend, recommended tree list for the urban renewal district, districts. But this is under the council agenda.
Yes. So what we're asking is you to provide the overlay that is across all districts. This is the policy. So you are policy setters and then that will apply it within those districts.
All right. So we have provided a list by Cora. I think it's also in our packet if you're able to access it. And for whatever reason, I got lucky and I'm on. So anyway, so Cora's, this is something that you updated and gone through, or is it a new list or all the above?
All of the above. We actually started this back numerous years ago when Randy Dixon was the head of the public works department. And all we found out after Greg got here, that all of the work that we had done could not be found. So we had to start all over again.
Was there anything to work from or is this just?
It's just our, our, our brains because we knew Rex Miller, who is on the board with, with myself and Meredith Childs, all of us have been on the board for a significant number of years. And we were able to draw from our vast knowledge and put, put the, the list back together.
So are these trees that are listed here, specific trees for certain areas? Is that how it's listed? Or that like the staff or Greg or somebody from, uh, the, no, um, public works can say, we're just going to put this tree here or that tree, or does it matter?
We have, actually we have a map of all where all of the trees are located within the, the area and the urban, the major quarters in the urban renewal area. And if you look at the list, those that have the little X to the left of the variety is ones that we are currently using and we currently have in, in our inventory. And anytime that a new tree needs to be planted, if we remove a tree, a new one needs to be replanted. We're going to go up, we're going to, this is the list that we're, we're expecting to have adopted so that it can be used. So we have some conformity within the different districts so that we don't have one tree, an, an oak tree here and the next one's a maple in the same block.
Okay. So the question, Counselor de novo is not online, but one of the questions that she had asked or was curious about, are any of these native to the area?
No, none of these trees are native to the area. One of the reasons we don't use native trees is because for one thing, most of the native trees around here are either conifers of some sort. Or they are varieties such as Cascara and Alder. And those types of trees are not good trees to be using for street trees. They don't have a long longevity as far as the number of years that they have. The Cascara actually fruits and drops nasty looking blackberries on everything. Alder trees do not have a deep root base. And so that's one of the reasons why we do not use them.
So the reason, and I can reiterate to her is that the native trees wouldn't be conducive to the street trees that we're, you're suggesting that we use here.
That's correct.
Okay. Questions, council?
No, just appreciate what you do. Knowing which trees are going to live and which ones won't tear up the roads helps us keep things looking nice without tearing everything up.
Well, involved in, in, or involved in our planning is that we are spec, making some specifications, which is our next project, which we'll come back to you for approval, is that each time that a street tree is planted, there'll be certain criteria that are going to be involved. And in other words, one of the things is that the area within the sidewalk that we use or designate as the tree area.
Right.
There's going to be a collar that's going to have to be placed around the roots of the tree down so far so that the true roots will go down instead of fanning out at the sidewalk level to keep the sidewalks from lifting.
Great. So I also know at one time, I think Rex did a survey of all the trees that we had in the area. Is that still, do we still have that?
We still have that. Yes. Yes. We do still have that. All of them are marked with a GPS. The city has the map. And we know where all of them are. And when one gets removed or replaced, it gets changed.
Great. Well, I just want to say thank you for a lot of work and your dedication on this and your passion, obviously. And so it's very much appreciated on my behalf in the council. So thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? No. Thank you so much for coming. Appreciate it. Perfect. I will pass those on. All right. Perfect. Yes. So that being the case, council, we would need to adopt the tree board recommendation of the tree list for the urban little districts.
I'll move that we approve the tree board's recommended tree list for the rights away within downtown and Empire Urban Renewal Districts.
Second.
There's a motion to second to adopt the tree board recommendation tree list. Any other discussion? All right. Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing that it passes. Thanks again. Uh, next item is consideration to approve professional services agreement for miscellaneous engineering services related to anaerobic digester. And Jennifer, you're up.
Thank you. So the city of Coos Bay has two wastewater treatment plants. Plant one is located at 680 Ivy Avenue and plant two is located at 490 Fulton Avenue. The solids removed from the treatment process of plant two are transferred via the collection system to plant one. Plant one has two anaerobic digesters that treat the solids from both treatment plants. The plant one digesters process the solids via heat and mixing for a period of time until they meet DEQ and EPA regulations. Once the solids meet these environmental regulations, they are recognized as bio solids and in the city's case, transferred to the lagoon in East Side and land applied to local farmland as fertilizer in the summer. So as stated previously, there are two digesters or plant one. The primary digester is 75 years old and the second di, secondary digester is 52 years old. While these digesters are old, staff has worked with consultants and has been determined that with upgrades and rehab of the inner components and in the, in the lids, the life of the digesters could easily extend another 25 years or more. Engineering for anaerobic digesters is a specialized field. The city's current list of engineers under the miscellaneous engineering services contracts do not have the specialty. As a result, staff advertised a statement of qualifications and received one submission from West Yost. Staff reviewed the SOQ and called for references. Staff is recommending the city contract with West Yost and enter into a three-year, zero-cost master contract. When engineering services are needed for the digesters, individual task orders not to exceed $200,000 will be created under this master contract. All future task orders exceeding the city manager's, manager's approval and authority will be brought back to council for consideration. This is similar to how staff manages the miscellaneous engineering services contract.
So, so did you say 52 years old on one of these? And what was the other?
Seventy-five and 52.
So plant two, even though it was rebuilt or brand new, do we still use the digest?
So the digesters are at plant one.
Oh, both of, we have two down there. Okay. And we don't have anything at plant two?
No, we got rid of the extra set of digesters with the upgrade. So now we only have to maintain one set of digesters and we transfer all the sludge from plant two over to plant one via the collection system.
Correct.
Rather than truck it.
Right. Yeah. Okay. So we haven't used West Yost before. Who did we use before this?
Honestly, we haven't done a lot of digester work. So.
All right. Well, good. So this is just an agent or engineer record that like we've done with others. But this is specialized and that's what he does.
Correct.
Okay. Questions, council?
We only got one SOQ. I'm guessing that's just because of the shortage of people in this field.
Very specialized. There was actually two people that were interested. We only got one submission.
Wow.
And we, we called. Let them know that this was out there.
There's no, with this action, it doesn't, there's no cost associated with this. So it's just an agent of record. So that being the case, if everyone's all right, I need approval to accept this professional services agreement for the engineering services related anaerobic digester for West Yost.
So moved. Second.
Have been moved and seconded to accept the engineering services related to anaerobic digesters from West Yost as a consultant or needed as needed. Anyone else have any questions? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing that it passes. And Counselor de novo just joined us. Thank you for being, I knew you were going to run late, Lucinda. So thanks. All right. We are to the city manager's report.
That's fast. Uh, so I was going to just share a few things. Uh, the first thing that I want to share because we've had some changes in schedules, just to remind everybody, it's been the Friday update, but we aren't having a follow-up conversation with the mayor tomorrow. Um, our next one will be following the August meeting, which will be on August 7th. Uh, just wanted to give you an update. Um, you may remember that we are working with HUD under their distressed communities technical assistance group specifically for three kind of elements. We're hoping for a fourth, but originally we asked them for a review of our permits and policies procedures. A assistance with developing some fiscal planning, strategic planning and tools to kind of to help us with that. And then some assistance with grant writing and management. We, they had a team here. We met, they met with everybody in kind of the side of the house that does all this work. And they put together a scope of work, which we'll meet with them on Thursday to kind of confirm that we're comfortable with that. And then it will get presented to the actual HUD department that will make the decision to fund the work that the consultant will do. We also were hoping that they may help us with some management training as we work up and kind of down our management levels. That's not a piece that would normally be included, but they do think there's a way to tag it in. So we're kind of waiting on that piece. But have confidence, I think that we'll definitely get the three that we originally were looking for. So uh, that's meetings on Thursday. So we'll kind of have an idea of how that's going to move forward. It will probably start in the fall. I think that's their goal is to get back and, and start in the fall. Uh, you may know, I think some of you might've attended, we had a softball game Coos Bay versus North Bend on Sunday. Um, we used that strategically for a kind of a team building exercise. We had a really good cross-section of our staff. We also had a planning commission member play with us. So it was great. It's making us think about ways we can do something similar. Initially talking about maybe a picnic for city staff in September. So we'll talk about that a little bit more before we kind of push it out, but we're really good about doing potlucks here. So um, I think it's something we could pull together pretty quick. Mingus is a great place. It's got playgrounds, open space. So if, if we get that figured out, obviously we'll include all of our boards and commissions and things like that. So.
Are you expecting a softball game out of this too?
Nope.
Good.
Nope. Nope. This will just be about hanging around and kind of visiting. Yeah. Yeah. But early stages.
Incredibly fun and funny to watch. And I got to tell you, our city manager has a pretty mean swing.
You wouldn't know it because I didn't really hit the ball too well, but I swung my heart out, man. Yeah. Uh-oh. I'm in trouble. Uh, I wanted to just give you an update. We are, you know, with the library project moving forward, we have Tacker re-engaged to kind of give us some visioning that we can use some imagery generalized as much as possible because we don't have a definitive kind of idea what this new site might look like. Working with the Probowski team on some informational pieces that we can send out to the community about the site, what, what we intend that to be, you know, and then walking into uh, what we intend to put on the ballot. We are also working with Hawkins, Della Field. They are our bond counsel. They've worked with us in the past. And also working with Piper Sandler. They are a financial advising firm. They are Oregon-based. You may remember we've worked historically with Wedbush, Jim Strickland, who we, I love. But he comes out of Arizona. And so there's always a piece of trying to catch up with what Oregon has as far as uh, bond laws. So this will make it a little bit easier. It's a nice transition because Melissa's stepping into that role. So it'll be good timing there. Just to let you know, we're working on all of that. We do expect to have something before you at your August meeting uh, for a ballot language. So probably noticed we had an IT transition. We didn't, didn't contemplate today being the first meeting that we were all coming together under the new folks. And so we should have planned a little bit better for that, but I think you Evan flowed pretty well through that. We are online and YouTube, so we are accessible in the ways we're supposed to be, but. And then just a reminder, Oregon Coast Music Festival is upon us. So catch as much of that as you can. And last piece is I'm meeting with the director of the history museum at the end of the month. Uh, we'll start that conversation about the extension of their boardwalk. So.
Okay. So that's it. Okay, council comments? Um, let's start with Drew.
Uh, so just two things building up. One, we might want to look, I, I don't know when the last time we looked, but with the Teakwood intersection, I, I would not like to see another street light out there. So really don't want our main drag to turn into Lincoln Cities, but it, it is getting a little wild there, especially with other stuff building up, but it's an ODOT road. So I don't know if we would need ODOT to do a traffic study on that. Decide what changes we might need in that little intersection.
Well, that was on my comments also. So Jennifer or Nicole or Chelsea or whatever. I know that when these plans and these developments happen, there normally is a traffic study that is done with them. And that traffic study dictates what needs to be done. Am I correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And so a traffic study was done.
Correct.
And the traffic study said that they didn't need a light or.
There's no proposed mitigation at the intersection of Teakwood and 101.
Cool. Already done.
All right. So I know that was addressed, um, you know, Dean, uh, but that's, uh, normally the case. And I can tell anyone that that's what we do. Anytime there's a new development of any sort, um, just like they did the Taco Bell on Empire or anywhere else or Coos Bay Village. A traffic study has to be done. Uh, and I, I don't remember that one not being done, any kind of application like that. And we follow that criteria. And with that being the case, I don't think there's any way that ODOT would change their mind with a traffic study saying that one's not needed. So.
Is there no way to appeal that from the city's perspective? I mean, I spent eight or nine minutes trying to take a right out of there earlier today. I mean, I agree. I think that as development continues to build up there, that we're going to continue to see backup.
And it could be, uh, but I think, so this is where, um, and I'll just step in as a city representative. If that becomes a case that we determine that needs to be done, we will bear that cost instead of the developer. Uh, if the traffic study would have said that it was needed, the developer would have borne the cost. And now if that falls back on us that it gets to that point, then we're going to have the cost, which is going to be pretty expensive to do on 101. So anyway.
Thanks.
I think it was a million the last time we added a light out there. And I know we have appealed a decision in the past because we did it with Empire.
Yeah. I don't know what the cost would be just for the light because the one on Coos Bay Village was the rail crossing and the light. But that was like two and a half million. So you're probably correct. I would imagine it would be close to a million um, in some fashion. So I don't know. I mean, I don't know if there's some way to, um, and I broached this with somebody and it gets really convoluted, that road that goes behind. Uh, I'm not sure if we can try to upgrade that in some fashion to, to relieve some of the traffic in another way out. Um, I can just say I'm glad that we didn't vacate that property, which was being looked at one time being done. So I don't know if that's something that we can try to facilitate some traffic that way. So to relieve it.
Then related to the cutter Orca, uh, the coasting ship. Yeah, I'm, I'm, I've talked with Boomer, right? About some of that going on because I scuttled, but got back to me from one of our local federal employees that they may downsize the Coast Guard presence out here. Uh, so I've, I've talked with one or two legislators about that. And it's, it's something that's on my radar because it's concerning. Obviously we're the densest population on the Oregon. Obviously, we're the densest population on the Oregon coast and we're where a lot of the choppers base out of, so. It, it's a worry when we see them downsize any, so, yep, I'm aware of it. That's it.
Okay, Lucinda? Any comments?
Yeah, my, my apologies, Mayor Benetti, for being late. I just wanted to commend the fire department, the chief in the fire department for an exceptional July 4th fireworks display. I heard so many wonderful comments from community members on just how wonderful it was and I also wanted to thank the downtown association for the activities at Mingus Park. I heard a lot of great feedback on that as well, so. And the only last thing is I'm so sorry I missed the first 15 minutes, I'm hoping someone can give me the Cliff Notes version of the, the tree board recommended list and which are native, if any, and that is all.
All right, yes, and we did inquire about that and I got some information for you, or Nicole, either one of us.
Thank you.
Uh-huh, Carmen?
Uh, no comments from me this evening, thank you.
All right, Sarah?
No comments from you tonight, thanks.
Okay, Stephanie?
Just wanted to continue with my, I, I have all the fun stuff. The farmer's market is happening, it's in full swing and it's busy, 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 doing a lot of great things in downtown and that's every Wednesday through October. Also, Blackberry Arts, I hope that's on your radar, that'll be coming up in August and the week prior to that, on August 17th, the Coos Bay Downtown Association is looking at having a cleanup and I hope that they've been communicating with the city on that. So I will check back with them and, and make sure that, that they follow up on that because I did ask. It was actually something they were working on for this month, but they decided to do it closer to Blackberry Arts Festival. Okay, so more to come from that and then also just from the Economic Vitality Committee for the Coos Bay Downtown Association, a very good conversation with that committee that's made up of people that make sense as far as business developers. I know Harv is, Harv, yeah, he's still online, the executive or the Main Street manager for the downtown association, Realtors and conversations about applying for a Main Street grant and where that should be focused, so there will be more to come on that.
All right, thanks. Couple of things, I also want to take off on Councilor de novo about the 4th of July fireworks, they were awesome. The park, Mingus Park, I was there and went around and checked out the different activities and I was there for the two runs, it was wonderful, the kids have a good time, so the adults, a lot of activities and it's always a good time. So thank you for all the staff that were involved. I heard we had a little problem with the fish, but I think we took care of that eventually, got it squared away. Also, the, I want to say that we're going to have the mayor's walk on the 23rd of July and it's going to be at the Empire Fire Station, we're going to start there, no? Eastside, you're right, I apologize, where we did Empire, Eastside Fire Station, we got the route all worked out, we think, and so hopefully you'll be there, it starts at noon and we'll have a good time and answer all the questions that we can. And if we don't have the answers, and I'm hoping Scott, are you going to be able to show up? I hope, I don't know, maybe you're not working, try, okay, all right. And also I want to just apologize for the mayor's talk, I've had some issues going on that I'll be dealing with out of town and I find myself committed on the Wednesday after this council meeting, so we'll get back on track starting in August. So that being the case, we have an executive session this evening, but what we'll do is we're going to take a recess or postpone this meeting. We'll come back into this meeting for an executive session, but we'll take care of urban renewal. So I'm going to take a recess on this and then we'll come back in, so Stephanie will be taking over for urban renewal.
So we'll take five minutes before we convene the urban renewal agency meeting.
Okay, so now Coos Bay City Council is back in session and we'll be going to executive session and you have some, you have a reading.
Words. Uh, the city council will now meet in an executive session pursuant to ORS 192.6602I to review and evaluate the employment-related performance of the chief executive officer of any public body, a public officer, employee or staff member who does not request an open hearing. If the council intends to come out of executive session to take final action, the presiding officer should announce when this open session will begin again. Representatives of the news media and the designating staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All of their members of the audience are asked to leave the room. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during the executive session except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decision may be made in an executive session. And it is my understanding that we are not coming back, so any action you choose to make, we can bring forward at the August 6th meeting.
Well, there should be no action necessary.